Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The first five items on your, your concern agenda with the contract for the council to approve. Item six is an ordinance amending the license tax classification, section sixteen dash one oh six, schedule eight.
Mr. Pruitt.
Um, Mr. Calhoun, I'm gonna ask that we just go ahead and vote on this thing. I'm gonna apologize to the, uh, business license department. I didn't think about contacting them before I put it on. But what I'd like to do is go ahead and vote on it, and if we need to change it between now and the end of the year for next year, we can do that. But I'd like just go ahead and vote on this and let's get it off the agenda.
Okay, Bob, which was coming in?
Yeah, uh, like we said, the, uh, this was first brought up last month. Uh, we did some research on this, and our research shows that even without a cap on, on the contractors, city of Montgomery is still cheaper than Birmingham, is still cheaper than Huntsville, Mobile, Tuscaloosa, Cedar, Madison, Gulfport.
Bob, does that, let me ask you a question. Does that include building permits too?
That doesn't so. I have to take your own business license.
Yeah, but some of them don't charge permits like we do. So I wanted the balance between the two items, because it affects every one of them.
The surrounding counties, Charlie, do not have to, 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 correct.
No building permits? So that's, we're, not, it's not apples to apples then?
Okay. Mr. Pruitt, anyone else have a question? What I think on that, Mr. Pruitt, I understand what you're trying to do on adjustment. And I know what we're faced with in the city of Montgomery when it comes to fees and licenses, we're, 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 some of the things we talked about in last meeting, we gotta figure out ways that we gotta support some of these things and not reduce. So, you know.
No, I agree with that.
Yeah.
But you just can't put folks out of business. But look, they, even if we, even if we, even if we pass this tonight, it does not go into effect until next year. And if we need to go back and look at it, we can, if we can come with something. Again, Bob, I apologize, I didn't come to you guys, I didn't, that's, that's my fault, I didn't think about it. But I'd just like to go ahead and pass it, vote it, and then if we need to, to address it, you know, October or whatever for next year, let's just do that as well.
What's the, what's the hurry there, Charlie?
What's the point? It's not gonna change anything.
They ain't gonna change October, let's put it off to a month from October, September.
May I say something? If, if we put caps on one particular industry like contractors, other industries like retail, wholesale, manufacturing is gonna be right behind one cap on their licenses.
Yeah, retails don't pay permits though either. And, and look, I'm just telling you guys, we're not comparable to the surrounding counties, and we wanna compete with Pike, and I know the Huntsvilles and Birminghams, we always throw ourselves, but that's not who we're competing with. We're competing with Pike Road, we talk to Prattville, and all these, get these big, big corporations that come, we've got to attract them here. You know, one of the things that the mayor and Jeremy Reed were talking about in their presentation is the, the house growth in Montgomery. How we're banking on, you know, over eight thousand homes being built out east in the next fifteen, twenty years. So, and I just said we vote on it and be done with it, and y'all just vote your conscience.
I think, I think, this is my last question to move on. If we vote on something that's not gonna go into effect until next year, what's the purpose of vote? Because it's, it's not gonna change the revenues right now.
No, it, it ain't changing revenue right now, but again, when, when contractors are looking at, you know, what the cost is in Montgomery versus building Pike Road, you know, we're high.
I, I don't think Pike Road compared to what's going on in Montgomery.
If it doesn't change the, then, my thing right now, we've got a problem collecting what we already built out. And we're sitting here now, right now, looking at the statement I got yesterday, we'd already collected forty million, forty-one million dollars last year this time, we, we had thirty-eight million this year, so we hadn't collected, we're not collecting what we have built out, or what we should be building out. So I, I'm afraid we got a problem there, bigger problem than, than this.
Yeah. All right, we'll vote it in the regular meeting.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Item seven, ordinance amended section sixteen dash one oh six, schedule Y.
Okay.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yeah.
All right.
Item eight, resolution authorizing issuance of a business license to, to snack man with no physical location working out of a pickup truck.
So, Stacy, I have a question on this. Is a snack man working out of a pickup truck, is this gonna be considered a food truck? What, based on our, our licenses and our permits on food trucks? I, I wanna see how this.
Must be a nice looking vehicle.
Yeah, we, I guess we ask that question if they do decide to show up tonight.
Yeah.
Bob, you coming to talk to them?
Okay, we're food trucks?
No, it, it says operating out of a pickup truck.
I'm sorry?
Snack truck is operating out of a pickup truck.
He came in and put in an application, um, what I understand it's a, uh, selling snacks out of a pickup truck, going through a neighborhood, I guess.
So, Mr. President.
It's not marked as such.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mitchell.
So would that be more of a line of an ice cream truck instead of a food truck? How, how do they do the licensing on a, do ice cream trucks have to get licensed through the city?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we do background checks, background checks and stuff like that.
It'll be more of a, cause a food truck has, has to top, tie into a brick and mortar because they have to do the, the grease and everything, so would it be more in line of an ice cream truck instead of a food truck?
Yeah.
And so, I guess it would be no different than him selling out of a van with ice cream and selling it out of a truck, that's.
Well, does, does an ice cream truck have health department, I mean, or no?
That's what, that's.
Yeah, okay, the applicant, this is prepackaged food, like bags of chips, so those, that sort of thing.
We, well.
Mr. President, I'm wondering.
Hello, I wanted to, yeah.
Well, I, I think we need, I guess we need to see what the pickup truck looks like. We want it, we don't want.
We don't want junk on the street.
Yeah.
Good point, Charlie. Well put.
Mr. President. Yeah, I mean, I, I've got two businesses that my establishment acts as a commissary for. So for those businesses that are doing prepared foods of some kind, I assume with the snacks, the idea is that there's no preparation of food, nothing that requires cold storage.
Right.
But my question is, is why, why it's coming before us? As, as Mr. Mitchell said, that.
As, uh, we are, it's gonna be going in the neighborhood, uh, children, you know.
But, but is it traditional that ice cream trucks come before the council?
And, and again, I do have the right to send, and, uh, out of an abundance caution, I would like to do this.
Say that again, I can hear you.
Section sixteen eighty-two states the revenue manager has the expression to come forward to council.
Okay.
And that's what I'm exercising my expression.
Okay, so, yeah, that's why I was trying to clarify.
Thank you.
So, go ahead, Jim.
Mr. President.
Ms. Mitchell.
I just see a pickup truck and leaving stuff in the back of a pickup truck that's not covered, and I, I just see a lot of health issues through that too. I mean, we don't know. Is it a covered pickup truck? Is he working out beside the pickup truck underneath a, a camper type thing? I just think there's a lot of unknowns to this.
I mean, does the, does an ice cream truck require a health department score?
Yes. I, I would think, but I don't know.
Revenue, does it?
Bob? All right, okay. We'll discuss this when, uh, we get the owners for the snack truck before us today at four, at five o'clock, because we, we're speculating now. I think what we're trying to do, we wanna know, are we setting a precedent that we're gonna just start letting pickup trucks come in and get licensed? You have to look.
Yes, ice cream trucks do have to have health. Did this business provide one?
All right.
This one did?
Well, see, see, the one thing, if he's gonna be in neighborhoods, then I'll shut up. Doesn't the police department need to check him out if he's gonna be roaming the neighborhoods?
Yeah, I think we got a background check in here on it. I mean, he hadn't showed up in, in a month, so I don't, I don't see him showing up today to vote on it anyway, so let's move on. All right, next item.
Item nine, appeal of proposed demolition of a business sign at thirty-four forty-seven Norman Village Road. In council, I sent y'all an email of, of a signed letter with a sign company and the receipt of where they have, um, gotten a contract with a sign company.
Did you see email?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Bullock, you're on the red note today, the special department did receive evidence of some level of intent for sign pending for the publication and the deposit issue references. So I believe Mr. Flynn has satisfied those are promised to continue with the sign at this particular location.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck with your business.
All right, item ten.
Item ten, resolution appointing Stuart Haley's to the housing authority.
All right, self-explanatory.
Item eleven, resolution appointing DeGanam for Christopher to the housing authority.
Okay, self-explanatory.
Item twelve, resolution authorizing the city of Montgomery to enter into a project agreement with the city of Montgomery, Montgomery County, and the Alpha Mutual Insurance Company regarding one hundred Capital Commerce Boulevard.
Okay, we'll have representatives in the regular meeting for discussion on that. Chair. You wanna do it twice?
Pardon?
You wanna do it twice?
I do not.
Okay, you gonna be in the regular meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll take it at this.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item number thirteen, are your demolitions.
All right, any question in appeal on the demolition?
Mr. President.
Mr. Uh, Samantha.
Uh, Mr. Dean, just real quick, the property that we held out last meeting at West Fred Gray, the property owner has no intent to sell, and so, uh, it can continue, we can move forward with the demolition. Yeah, no, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. All right.
Item fourteen, resolution declaring authorizing assistance of house protection of public access on various lots.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Any council have anything for going on with this roster? Thank you. All right. In our work session roster, we have Mr. Trey Flowers, street road paving progress.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Trey.
Good afternoon, council, thank you for your time. I don't know why it was written up that way. I was asked to give a presentation on vegetation control and the vegetation control program we'll have in place this summer.
Okay.
So it won't be about roads, but thank you, council, for your time.
You know, roads are more exciting to this council, that's why I call you, would it be exciting, now you wanna talk about vegetation?
That's the way it was sent to me.
I'll keep it, I'll keep it short, yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Um, just wanna make this work. So our vegetation plan this summer is different than it's been before, and just wanna let y'all know about it. As I'm sure you all know, we have three hundred and forty-plus ditches that we maintain in the city. That's just what we do, we maintain them for stormwater flow, um, and we also do right-of-way cutting. For the ditches that we maintain in the city, we have about, we have exactly twenty-four people and two mowers to maintain all of the ditches. We, um, are down twenty-four people because we're no longer utilizing the, uh.
You make.
Trustee labor, and, um, we don't have our temporary employee program this summer running for budgetary reasons. To offset some of those needs, and also with our right-of-ways, we're offsetting those needs. On our right-of-ways, we have, um, four bushhogs running, we have another crew of four mowers running to maintain all the right-of-ways that we maintain. So to help with that this year, we have instituted a, uh, program with keyless vegetation management, where they will be spraying for us, uh, approximately sixty-four of our largest ditches and most high-profile ditches, and the right-of-ways along our, uh, larger right-of-way areas that includes Old Selma Road, Hunter Lou, those areas, and in South Montgomery County as well. Um, that program will consist of spraying twice this summer, sixty-four different ditches and right-of-ways that we spray, um, once in May and again in August. The intent is not to be a kill spray, but a vegetation management spray, it'll be promoting the growth of low growing grasses and, uh, hopefully killing weeds and fast-growing grasses such as the, uh, Johnson grass that we have so much trouble with, particularly in the south part of the city. So that'll be a program we have installed, and it will continue this summer and hopefully next year as well. And after eighteen months or so of that program, the seed bed that's in the ground will, you know, be diminished enough that it should offset the lack of labor we have in the cutting. But it's still our goal to cut these ditches three times a year, as it always is. And that can be, these images here are taken from the open data portal, so that can be tracked when they're cut throughout. Do y'all have any questions about, uh, the city's vegetation program this year?
Any question?
I got a question.
Mr. Pruitt?
Trey, I heard we possibly could be getting back the inmate labor, is that?
I have heard that it is in, in, in the work, in talks. We'll, um, won't be able to use them until legal gets us to go ahead.
Hey, I have a que, one more question. If you had a magic wand, and I know, you know, a thousand people and four thousand weed eaters, but if you had a magic wand, twenty-four people is not a lot of people to cut ditches and.
No, so we usually do that with twice the number. We have, you know, temporary employees of ten and then fourteen trustee labors, it's usually forty-eight people.
How could we get there? Because as this council knows, in these past, quote, rainstorms that we had, you know, it's vital that these ditches be cleaned out. What can we do as a council to help you get to where you need to be?
Get your weed out.
Whatever you need.
Um, last year, we were successful in getting all the ditches cut three times, some of them as many as four times. Um, weather plays a lot in that, it was a nice dry year, we didn't have a fast-growing season, so we were able to stay ahead of it. Um, the ten temporary employees that we use and have always been afforded, not having them this summer is, it's detrimental. And also, they get to be part of sort of a pilot program. A lot of those temporary employees, if they work out, will become permanent employees. It's a way to temporarily bring people on, see if they're gonna work out. We would like to have that back if we could.
What do we need to do to make that happen?
It's just budgetary constraints.
Trey, is any way to bid some of this stuff out?
Sir?
Bid, bid some of this, these ditches out?
The ditches for cutting, not as easy. The right-of-way there is, and we've looked into doing that. Um, the ditches, because of where they are and the access through there, um, we're not as comfortable, you have to cross some private property, we have water easements, but sending private companies that aren't designated as utility companies to utilize the city easements and right-of-ways and the utility easements and right-of-ways has some, you know, usage issues. But we are able to utilize keyless because they are state-bidded and they are the same contractors that the water company uses here in Alabama, that the gas company uses in Alabama, and that, uh, AT&T uses nationally. So they have, um, franchise agreements with those utilities to utilize their right-of-ways.
That slows the growth down.
Yes.
Good, how, how much do you think you can slow it down?
I'm hoping to, I'm hoping to cut the, hoping to cut the growth almost in half in the places that we're spraying. And that we chose the places to be sprayed based off of the manpower and hours it took to control these ditches by weed eaters and by the visibility. So it should be, some of the places that you get the most complaints about should see some control this summer.
Because that's the majority of your work, and Trey is weed eaters, it's not lawnmower, yeah, it ain't lawnmowers, it's weed eaters.
Yes, it's manpower and weed eaters.
Mr. Calhoun and Mr. Mitchell would love to come out there for a week or two with you.
They're familiar with where we are, they've got ditches all through their area that they.
No, they would like to come weedy.
Well, I don't know about that. They see us out there, they, they're always supporting us when we're out there, so that's nice.
Just need to invest in some goats.
They'd drown, first rain, they'd drown.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Trey.
Thank you. Mr. Archley, legislative brief.
Mr. President, members of the council, mayor's office, I think most of y'all know me, Archley. Quentin Hawkins, who works with me on this, is stuck up at the state house, he had some bills up, so, um, really just here to say hello and, you know, I've sent a tracking sheet that we send, I guess Brenda gets it out to y'all once a week in the mayor's office. I'm certainly here to answering questions. There's a few hot topics that have been in the press. I think we've all seen the Glock switch ban that's, uh, was pretty heavily bipartisan ship which passed. I think that'll help our local law enforcement quite a bit. Um, and there's some other bills floating law enforcement and some other ones that we're keeping an eye on, but really, um, here to answer any questions. Just big picture, the budgets have, the senate's passed their version of the budgets, and the house have passed their version of the budgets, and we gotta come together on some things that, we'll see how that happens. But, um, we've got, I think today's the twenty-second day, if I'm not sure, so we've got about seven or eight days left in the session. Um, wrapping up shortly after the first of May is when it should be wrapping up.
Okay.
Um, but any questions?
Any question? Well, I wanna thank you, Mr. Lee, uh, Arch, for coming down, you know, as far as representing the city of Montgomery, as far as our government affairs up in, up at the state house and the things that you relate to, it's on a weekly basis, it's been eye-opening for this council to just be a part of the process. And I just have one question, based on what you're seeing up there, are there any momentum, momentum on the, uh, police chief appointment bill?
So that bill, and it's on your tracking sheet, it kinda came out of committee and then has sat still and hasn't moved a whole lot anymore. Um, I was with Representative Ingram earlier today discussing some other bills they might introduce. Um, I've heard talk about maybe coming forward with that some more, of course, it was bipartisan, but it hadn't moved a whole lot yet, so if it does, it's gonna have to get moving pretty quick. So I'm not sure that it's gonna go anywhere.
Hope it's on some skates with some two wheels on it, so we get it slowed down. All right, any question, Mr. Lee?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Lee, I was just wondering if there are any other municipalities that have been able to tap into the state budget for municipal projects or anything like that that we're seeing in other locations?
I mean, there's some bigger projects that have, um, over the years, keep, you know, track on it. Obviously, it depends on how it affects the rest of the state as a whole. I mean, if that's something we're looking at, I mean, money's tight, you know, it always is, it's certainly a little bit tighter now with everything going on. And, and again, you know, whether you're a municipality, whether you're some entity, to worry about getting on the budget is, you start now for the next level, so, you know, the budget work, just, I mean, on steroids, same thing y'all do here. I mean, you're working during the summer and in the fall, or spring rather, to get ready for the budget in August and September, so it's, uh, you know, certainly a year ahead of time project out, but, I mean, if, you know, there's, I mean, today, the airport authority was up there discussing, uh, our issues with the runway, you know, they were talking about getting some state money involved in that, so not necessarily city of Montgomery, but some collaborative efforts, of course, the city, the county, the state, and the fed. So there's some projects and areas, but it's kinda specific.
Yeah, I ask that because I know we've, we've brought this up before, Mr. Compton's sitting in today, I know that, you know, we've talked about whether you call it an occupational tax or other kind of ways for the city of Montgomery to tap into some revenue mechanisms, but also know that we could also look at it from a project standpoint. And I think right now is the time, as we see where the budget shakes out this year, I know that next year it's gonna be even tighter than it was this year, um, that we start coalescing around maybe a singular or one or two things that we really can advocate for along with the team that's gonna be up on the hill on our behalf to make sure that we get some of this through. I mean, there's sixty-two thousand people coming to work in this city that don't live here, we're at a deficit on that, and so this is, this is something that we have to make, uh, these legislators aware of, especially as they come to the great city of Montgomery to do their work on behalf of the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd certainly say that, you know, maybe here, when session gets out, Quentin and I'll come back, and whether it's a work session, we can sit down and get some, you know, plans maybe that the city as a whole wants to come with, and we'll be happy to do whatever needs to, you know.
Yeah, there's a few bills that we wanna get on the next, next legislative session that we wanna try to move on. Some of the financial backing, some other things that we need to get changed, has been in place for years, so we talked about that earlier, so I just wanna get that on the fact back. But again, thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other thing from the mayor?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitchell.
No, I, um, so to this council and, and Mr. President, it was a, a Montgomery documentary that, that came out probably two days ago. I watched that documentary five times, it's fifty, fifty-four minutes, and it shows a small depiction of Montgomery, but it does show the reality. And it just shows us how we feel for the home, the school, the church, the community, and it falls back on us. I, I think that once we got away from the community centers, once we turned it back over to MPS, because most of those young men that was on that, that, that documentary was of those ages when we cut out the community centers. We, we turned back over middle, middle school sports. And I just think that we, Glenn, as the chair, chair, chairperson of public safety, I think that we need to at least meet once a month on public safety. Um, I think it's a lot of things that we could do for this city, but in reality, people were mad, but that's their reality. That's what they're facing here in the city of Montgomery. And it's, it's bad when you have a group of young men that feel like they have no hope. As, as leaders, we gotta show them that there is hope in the city of Montgomery. So we, we gotta do more than just sit, we gotta come up with something that we can get them out of those streets, or we gotta give them, uh, uh, the chamber is here, we gotta get them some jobs that's paying more than minimum wage. We gotta give them an opportunity to say, hey, we can get you a job at Amazon paying seventy-five dollars an hour with, with health insurance, so they can say, you know what, it's fast money, it's not the best money. We got to do something, and we cannot continue to sit back as our young men and women die in the streets of Montgomery. And I'm saying this, if you have not watched that documentary, please watch that documentary. You might not think that it's, it's Montgomery, but it is the Montgomery. If you haven't been to those places, please drive to those places. When they telling you, they're telling you their truth. They're not telling you nobody else's truth, they're telling you what they live daily. So you may not believe it, or you may not think that we can change, but you gotta give them a reason to wanna change. They gotta see people like us going where they are, bringing them to where we are. And we cannot do it just sitting behind here raising our hands. We got to get in the street. We have to have, I know we talked about the offers of violence prevention, I have been on the phone with Rotary Club all day today, trying to handle a situation that happened over the weekend. So those are the small things that we're doing in the city of Montgomery, we just gotta do more for more people. So I, I beg of you, let's start meeting, let's have those conversations, but we have to include them in those conversations that we're doing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President, let me, let me make a comment. Also, uh, on that item, I think that particular video is probably over a three-year period of time, which is, still means we gotta watch for it. But last week, our parks director spoke to my Rotary Club. He needs to speak all over this city, because what we've done, the mayor and the city has done with these community centers is huge. It's, it's gonna touch a lot of lives and give a lot of people an excuse, they won't have an excuse not to have something to do, they'll have something.
That's right, Charlie.
It's impressive, and the people I was with were impressed what, what Brandon did last week, and I, I commend the city for what we've done with those. We needed it, we got it, and it's gonna make a difference.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
I commend the council for putting, raising your hand on the vote to provide the funding for those things. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I just think that there's an opportunity as well, you know, for us, we just had a big vote with the, uh, school board and superintendent, and there's gotta be more collaboration and coalescing. Education is so important to this process, and to your point about the jobs, you know, one of the things that I see every time I drive down towards Hope Hall is all these manufacturing places that have jobs, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-eight, thirty dollars an hour, making sure that kids have the skill set to be able to pass an, pass an OSHA exam, to fill out, uh, the paperwork necessary to apply. The literacy rate in this city is embarrassing, and we can't just sit on this side of it, as you said. I think there is an opportunity to bring that entire ecosystem as a talking point to what we're doing, so that we're equipping children with the positive opportunities that we have. You know, there are a lot of, uh, businesses that would love to be able to fill, uh, you know, their payrolls with, uh, graduates of Montgomery Public Education, you know better than most. And so I think that's, this is a time now where regardless of frustrations that are out there, we have got to figure that component out, we cannot wait till kids turn fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old, starts kindergarten.
Mr. President, um, I also wanted to state that, um, uh, we mentioned a lot about MPS and from the city to MPS, but we miss a whole population of people and students that are no longer a part of MPS and that are already in this, what we saw as a documentary, they are no longer a part of MPS, and we're missing the mark every time, even through this conversation, we're still missing the mark. And a lot of times, it's when those students that are, have learning disabilities or mental health issues, once they graduate high school, they now belong to the streets, and they have no help, no follow-on, and I believe it's time for the city to figure out how we can help with the mental health issues that are in our community, and how we can bridge that gap from the ages of seventeen to twenty-five years old, on what kind of services we can provide. Other cities mobile, when we were at the National League of Cities, mobile had an opportunity where they partnered with the Alabama Department of Mental Health, and they created this hub that dealt with the mental health, it's, and it's funding available, but we have to go out and seek that. And then we have the CBI program that we've already invested in, that we need to ensure that they're trained up, they're staffed up, and they're out in the community. So, there's this education piece, there's a mental health piece, and then the major piece is access to these resources, because the community centers are amazing, but they age out at fourteen. And so, what do you do after fourteen? We started the team program, how do we market that? How do we put that out to the community so they know that it exists? It is still people in these communities that we saw in that documentary that do not know that community centers are open, they do not know that the Boys and Girls Club exists, it's parents and grandparents that are still asking and talking in the comments about Boys and Girls Club, and they've been in existence. We have to give the people the tools that they need, and we have to take it to them, because obviously, they do not know how to come and get it. We can create all the programs we want to, we can push out all the funding we want to, but if the people do not know that initiatives and the programs exist, they will not be utilized properly, and we won't maximize the opportunities that we have. So, the conversation is amazing, but I hope two weeks from today, two years from today, we're actually taking actionable items and actionable steps and giving these resources to the community truthfully, not just projecting it, not just displaying it, not making up a talking point, but actually pushing it out in the community and taking it to the people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I just have one comment, and I'ma step up, step aside from it. We, we're talking about the children, but we've also left out the parents.
Yep.
We've got to interact these parents into what is going on, to make sure that they understand that we're here to help them as well, and to educate them into help employ them. When you are not employing the parents, you can't employ the children. So, we've got a collaboration of work to do all together.
Thank you. All right, any more questions?